I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular city council meeting of September ninth, two thousand and twenty four to order. Roll call, please.
Zazada.
Here.
Larson. Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Seven I.
I do wanna let everyone know, Alderwoman Larson let me know ahead of time that she would not be able to be here. And with that, we're moving on to agenda item B, Pledge of Allegiance. Captain Hyvee, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gentry. You have a great evening, sir. Alright, then, moving on to agenda item C, approval of the agenda, I would take a motion to modify the agenda to add an additional proclamation under agenda item D.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderwoman Zazada. Roll call, please. Are questions or comments? It'll be obvious. Alright. Roll call, please.
Zazada.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven I.
Alright, the agenda has been approved as modified. Moving us on to agenda item D, presentations. Can anyone guess what a new proclamation might be about? Alright, so I, and I heard it from multiple council members, city staff, residents, you name it, about what a momentous event happened this Saturday. And I'm a big believer, when things like that happen, it's time to take pause, and everyone, not just Northern Illinois University, not just the football team, to take pause and actually recognize what an amazing thing transpired. I think so many of you heard from friends and family, I heard them from states, many states across the nation, the kudos, the excitement, the what a great game, you played so well. And I think that's a testament, one, to our student population that we have, testament to our NIU athletes that we have, our coaches, our athletic director, administration, and the president of the university. So, I wanted to take a moment and do a proclamation. And this is congratulating Northern Illinois University, President Lisa Freeman, and the Northern Illinois University Husky Football Team, coaches, and athletic director, on their exciting and historic victory over Notre Dame on September seventh, two thousand and twenty four. Whereas, Northern Illinois University, NIU, is a world-class, research-focused, public institution that attracts students from across Illinois, the country, and the world, with over two hundred and fifty thousand alumni worldwide. And whereas, in addition to its seven degree-granting colleges with over forty academic departments, NIU features a robust array of intercollegiate athletic programs for men and women. And whereas, the NIU Football Huskies are a member of the Mid-American Conference and Division One Bowl Division of the NCAA, and have appeared in sixteen Division One A and college division bowl games. And whereas, until September seventh, two thousand and twenty four, the NIU Football Huskies were zero and fourteen, all time, against opponents ranked in the top ten, Associated Press Top Twenty-Five poll. And whereas, NIU Football has not won a conference victory against a ranked opponent since a nineteen sixteen upset of number twenty-one Alabama in two thousand and three. And whereas, NIU won a stunning victory against number five-ranked Notre Dame in South Bend on September twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four, by a score of sixteen fourteen. God, what a great game. Whereas, the Huskies, the Husky win was the nineteenth boneyard win in school history. Boneyard wins are victories over power conference, ranked teams, and notable independents. NIU's last boneyard win, last season, over Boston College in the season opener, NIU has three boneyard wins under the head coach of Thomas Hammack since two thousand and twenty one. That is awesome. And whereas, after its historic win over Notre Dame to put its season record at two and zero, NIU entered the Associated Press Top Twenty-Five rankings for the first time since December eighth, two thousand and thirteen, coming in at number twenty-five. Whereas, the NIU victory was not luck, but the result of a dominant and tough defense, exciting and dramatic offense, heroic coaching, and a will that defied all the odds. So therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, as mayor of the city of DeKalb, do hereby proclaim September seventh, two thousand and twenty four, as NIU Football Day in the city of DeKalb, and encourage all citizens to cheer for our one and only NIU Huskies. Can I get a round of applause for our Huskies? I tell ya, I feel like Coach Hammack, up here sweating, just reading it. My heart is pumping. I'm not kidding. Alright, so I would love for an opportunity, one, we'll bring the proclamation down, we'll get the whole council gathered around, and we can get a photo op. And then, always happy Athletic Director Fraser, if you wanted to say a couple words as well. I don't know what's best. What, do you wanna talk first, or do you want us to come down first? Alright, please, come on up to the microphone. And we have quite an audience listening, too, so it's gonna be exciting for all of them to hear it at home.
First of all, humbled, humbled. Fresh off of a victory like that, there's a lot of things that happen. It happens because of the community that we have. You know, I've, I've been fortunate to be here, this is my twelfth season. I live both in DeKalb and Sycamore, and I love this community. I always talk about the Calb as being the epic center of what things could be and will be. And I'm really excited about just the overall atmosphere that this is bringing. On behalf of our, our president, Lisa Freeman, we do not do what we do if we don't have the shared agenda between our community and NIU. It's always been that way. It's gotten better over time. And the boys, the fellas, the staff, you know, we, we brought a good subsection of DeKalb to South Bend, okay? We sold out on our ticket allotment of three thousand, we brought our band, we had our supporters. I'll get emotional if I go too far, but I'll just say that I'm so happy that we'd be able to represent our fine city, our great people, our great university on this level. And I'm so humbled and thankful that we have this relationship. So Mayor Barnes, thank you. Obviously, everyone here, thank you. It's been a great ride. I have to remind you, this is only the second year.
We know, we know.
Okay. I don't wanna get too high or too low. As a former coach, I'll just say that we got a lot of work to do. We got folks that know that here, but this is a great step forward. And I love the fact that we have this level of notoriety, visibility, and it's just gonna make us better. We are the epic center of college football today. So please, take it all in and enjoy it, but it doesn't help, it doesn't happen without the support of the people in here and in our community, and we know that. So, thank you, thank you, thank you for the support. So, let's go Huskies, let's continue.
Let's go Huskies. Alright, let's all go down and get a quick photo out here.
Oh, my goodness. I'm here bearing a few gifts, because we could not let this thing go without making sure that everybody understands that cardinal and black is a prerequisite. So what we have is, we've got some, we've got some, some jerseys that have been decommissioned, decommissioned, that we want to make sure that you have as a symbol of our thankful support that you've provided us. I wouldn't recommend that you try to squeeze in these jerseys, but it's a symbol of appreciation that we have back with you. If you, if you do squeeze them in, please snap a selfie and send it to me, because I would love to see that. But we wanted to say thank you very much, because it means that way. It's always been this way, especially while I've been here in my twelve years. Me and my wife, Rosa, we absolutely love this place. So again, thank you very much. Enjoy, and God bless.
Oh, yes.
I'm photos in.
Good.
Good to see you. Come on in.
Morning.
Good?
Good.
Bounce it out.
I'm going to do it.
Okay, good.
Hold on, hold on a second. Just bear with me, I'm gonna fix something real fast.
Yeah, I'll help you just.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Oh, Caroline did that.
Okay, now you're all even.
You've got bounced out a little bit, that's alright.
This is gonna go nationwide, you want us to look great.
Alright, here in three, two, one.
How about?
Scott, can we get a hug?
Talk about one more. Alright, go Huskies, one, two, three. Thank you all.
I tell ya, that is a way to start a meeting. That is just too, too awesome. Alright, I also have another proclamation to read. And this is a proclamation for Constitution Week, September seventeenth through September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas, the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles in limited government in a republic dedicated to the rule of law. And whereas, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, marks the two hundred and thirty-seventh anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas, public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September seventeenth through twenty-three as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly, vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. In witness thereof, I have set my hand and cause the seal of the city of DeKalb to be affixed this ninth day of September two thousand and twenty-four, to recognize it as Constitution Week. I don't know if you can give a round of applause to the Constitution, but why not? Alright, we do have a representative, Mrs. Willett, from the American, or the Daughters of the American Revolution, here to receive the proclamation. And if council wouldn't mind me one more time, we go down and take a picture with her? That'd be great. Alright, yeah, just a great way to start the meeting. Alright, moving on to agenda item E, public participation. We have one person that wants to speak at agenda item E, that is Mark Charvat. So reminder, sir, you have three minutes.
Yep. I wanna talk about the upcoming reading of the ordinance regarding the idea of selling liquor in gas station, I should say, selling liquor in hair salons and beauty salons. There is the feeling of hypocrisy and favoritism when it comes to this particular ordinance. Gas station owners have come to the city council asking for ordinance to be modified to allow them to sell packaged liquor in gas stations in DeKalb. The city council has denied that request. On South Fourth Street, a business owner came to this council requesting minor alcohol sales at a proposed sandwich shop at Taylor and Fourth Street. That was turned down by my aldermen and the mayor. Now that building continues to be vacant. So, thank you, Greg and Cohen. A south-side laundromat asked for alcohol sales and was denied. There's a conflict we have here. We now have an appointed alderman who owns a new barber shop that was recently moved to DeKalb from Sycamore, and recently had a grand opening that was attended by the mayor, city manager, chamber VIPs, and now a few weeks later, out of nowhere, comes a proposal to allow alcohol sales in barber shops. A proposal that I suspect was perhaps known by the alderman, but not discussed at his well-attended ward meeting. And you know what? I attended that ward meeting. And shocking, not one citizen addressed the need to add alcohol to barber shops and hair salons. People at that meeting addressed crime. They addressed the mayor's proposed trifecta of tax increases, sales, gasoline, and grocery, the assault on the elected city clerk's office by the mayor and city manager in this council, and the mayor's violation cited by the attorney general's office in reference to the Open Meetings Act, when he denied a citizen's right to address the city council. Not one person at that meeting requested the need to add booze to hair salons. I have a strong feeling this proposal was known well before the meeting took place and was delayed to somehow avoid tough questions being asked at that meeting, just a hunch. It's also worth noting the lack of transparency on which the alder, on which alderman actually requested this item on the agenda. The backup material provided by Mr. Nicholas is intentionally vague. As you'll recall, when this council recently discussed the downtown SSA options, which I think was a very fair idea for the free, I should say, a fair idea for the people downtown to pay for snow removal, it was revealed which alderman requested that item. It was called transparency. However, the name of the alderman or mayor who requested the item regarding the hair salons has not been revealed. The lack of transparency is problematic and leads the public to think we have a quid pro quo situation here. I believe any alderman who does own a barber shop should recuse himself or herself from this. This ordinance has lots of other issues. Transparency and fairness is required.
Time's up. Alright, so with that, moving on to agenda item F, appointments, we have none. Moving on to agenda item G, consent agenda. Number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Number two, accounts payable and payroll through September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, in the amount of two million, four hundred and one thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety cents. Number three, investment and bank balance summary through July, two thousand and twenty-four. Number four, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through July, two thousand and twenty-four. And number five, crime-free housing bureau report, August, two thousand and twenty-four. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Powell. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Zazada.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven I.
Alright, the consent agenda has been approved. Agenda item H, public hearings, we have none. Agenda item I, considerations, we have none. Agenda item J, one, number one, resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash zero nine four, authorizing a TIF Fund Two Sixty-Two Architectural Improvement Program, AIP, economic incentive for the property at one forty-seven through one forty-nine, South Third Street, in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars, Maria Codillo. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Zazada. Before we get into this, I will be recusing myself from the vote and not participating in the conversation due to the fact that I own a commercial building in the TIF district as well. I'll just facilitate the meeting moving forward. City manager, you wanna go ahead?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an application by Ms. Codillo for a TIF AIP grant for a property that has two different store addresses, one forty-seven, one forty-nine, South Third Street. In this case, the applicant is looking for some help with roof repairs that far exceeded once, once contractors were able to meet with the owner what was expected. And in these instances, there's a ten percent reimbursement for deferred maintenance, as this would be called. The, the actual roof repairs exceeded twenty-eight thousand dollars. The council approval of an AIP grant of two thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight, which would be the, the ten percent reimbursement, is recommended. And with that, the, the TIF AIP program funding for two thousand and twenty-four will be close to exhausted.
Questions or comments, council? Hearing none, then? Roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Zazada.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Six I.
Resolution two zero two four dash zero nine four passes. Number two, resolution two zero two four dash zero nine five, authorizing a Fund Four Hundred Architectural Improvement Program, AIP, economic incentive, for the property at eight thirty East Lincoln Highway, in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, and it's to Miguel Zapata. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Walker. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And this pertains to a Fund Four Hundred, as the title says, AIP loan. This is a non-TIF loan. But the property at eight thirty East Lincoln Highway is probably familiar to the council. Recall that about a year ago, the council allowed a, a new use, which would be the establishment of a prepaid services outlet at this particular address. The owner is Miguel Zapata. He has undertaken more work than he originally planned. He eventually has led to the gutting of the building. There is, I just make a reference to it, there's an ancillary pie-shaped lot, really an odd-shaped lot, that he also wants to improve with some paving and striping and so forth, that would make it easier for customers to come in and get out. There's only a few off-street parking spaces on the lot now at the corner, and then there's no on-street parking, obviously, on Lincoln Highway. But the, the overall cost of the gutting and then the rebuilding of the interior and also some work on the outside is going to approach a hundred thousand dollars. We have about twenty-five thousand dollars left in uncommitted money in a non-TIF Fund Four Hundred account, and we recommend, this seems like a good way to end a year. It's, it's a suitable use in terms of our codes, and it's also on the, one of the major arterials going through town.
Council, questions, comments? Joe By there today, he's definitely doing a lot of work. That is a major gut. There is no doubt about it. Was the gas station when we were, when I was a kid?
Long time ago.
Zebby's?
Then it became a used car.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
That's right. Alright, hearing no other comments or questions, roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Zazada.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven I.
Resolution two zero two four dash zero nine five passes. I know they're not here, but I definitely wanna express my appreciation to Miguel and Maria for both choosing to continue to invest in our community. It's always cool to see. Alright, moving on to agenda item L, ordinances, first reading. Ordinance two zero two four dash zero four three, amending chapter twenty-four building code to adopt the two thousand and twenty-one International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, ISPSC, with amendments and, with amendments and amendments to the two thousand and twenty-three National Electrical Code, NFPA seventy. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City manager?
I just want to draw your attention to Chuck Shepherd, sitting in the front row. He's a master carpenter, a, a well-known and, and a very successful developer of residential and commercial property in our community and beyond. Chuck has given of his time to, as a volunteer, to chair our building code review board, which has been added since the early part of January. The name, the other names on the board are on your, in your background on page three. And they've been doing a lot of work. The Fire and Police Commission does a lot of work, these folks are doing a lot of work, too. And they are working their way through about a dozen different codes. And back in May, you did have a crack at approving some of the specification codes. We have one more such code, the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, not something you think of a lot, but it also is part of that two thousand and twenty-one series. There were some minor changes that were included that you'll see in the further, deeper background that was attached to our agenda for tonight's meeting. The National Electrical Code was considered by the council and improved, and new revisions were approved back in May, but the, the board took another look at, on the basis of some continuing information we're getting from contractors and from others who are looking at this particular code, looking at the ground fault specifications, including some exceptions, there aren't very many anymore. Pretty much a house now, a brand-new single-family house, has the GFI receptacles throughout the house. And there are some other changes, which will add ultimately to the cost of a single-family house, but they're also part of the, the national code series, and it is the wave of the present and the future, probably. So, we, we recommend that the council approve of this ordinance, which touches on those two codes in particular. Not too far behind are the existing structures code and the property maintenance code, and the, the granddaddy, grandmother of it all, which is international building code. Yeah. That's a lot of work, hundreds of pages yet that they're, they're working their way through. And we'll be coming back to you probably a couple more times before the year's out.
Mr. Shepherd, if you'd like to come up and say a few words, you all have worked so hard, feel free to elaborate on anything you think the city manager came up short on.
Bill has covered it quite adequately. The only thing I would add is, part of the reason we're coming back on next National Electric Code is, obviously, it's very important, but we're trying to align ourselves with Sycamore, Genoa, and the county. And we're working with John Sauter, Derek Highland, at the, and there were some things they were doing and thinking, and so we've kinda ground, ground out between ourselves and them. And that's why we have some, some additional work or additional changes on this National Electric Code. Pretty, I guess, the one that just like highlighted both, all, all three entities were, they were saying ground fault for refrigerators, sump pumps, ejector pumps. And I don't know if, if anybody's had experience with ground faults, but they trip all the time. And you don't wanna have it tripping, your sump pump be tripped, and you're gone, and then the pump doesn't operate. So, we are actually, it'll be a dedicated outlet so that people won't, even though it's not a GFI, say, in a basement, it'll be a plug. And the likelihood of someone unplugging that and, and plugging their vacuum cleaner in there, and then it's slight, or hopefully, it's, it's slight. So, there were some tweaking we did after talking with, with these other three entity, or all three entities.
Any questions or comments for Chuck or the city manager? Oh, yes, Alderman Verbic.
Mr. Shepherd, just a heartfelt thanks to you and the group for, you know, your work leading to a safer DeKalb. So, thank you.
Yeah. And Dawn has just been, oh, God, sent you. She listens to us.
Dawn's been doing a lot of work, and she, and she pulls this stuff together and shovels it to me, and then I try to make sense of it, so.
So I agree with Alderman Verbic's comments. I know you all put in a ton of time on this, and I know it's because you care. You wanna make sure that things are done right, they're done safely, and they're done with a little bit of common sense sprinkled in there, too, which is really greatly appreciated from this council, I'm sure. Oh, Tracy, you had a comment?
No.
Oh, okay.
I saw your finger go up.
Gotcha. Yeah, hearing no other comments or questions, I would say roll call, then.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Zazada.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance two zero two four dash zero four three has been approved on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Walker. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Walker.
Yes.
Zazada.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance two zero two four dash zero four four pass, oops, sorry, I misspoke. Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two four dash zero four three. Moving on to agenda item L two, ordinance two zero two four dash zero four four, amending chapter thirty-eight, intoxicating liquors, section thirty-eight oh seven, classifications of liquor licenses by adding a cosmetic liquor license. We have two public comments first before I take a motion to bring it to the floor. First, Nancy Doherty?
I just would like clarification a little bit about what I read about what you want to do. You're talking about a cosmetic liquor license. On one of your paragraphs, you clearly stated licenses would be approved for businesses that primarily provide services such as the beauty cosmetics, barber shops, beauty shops, nail salons, and spas. What percentage is primarily? That's a word that would mean fifty-one What percentage is primarily? That's a word that would mean fifty-one percent. Are you talking that the business needs to be more than fifty-one percent? That's my first question. The second one was alcohol for sale will be limited to beer, wine, and seltzer. What seltzer? Are we talking hard seltzer? Because that was not clarified. And this last thing would be, who would be responsible for compliance to people maintaining this? Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. And then we also have Danielle Castillo.
Hi, my name is Danielle Castillo, and I'm a small salon suite business owner here in DeKalb. I've been a small business owner for about five years and a cosmetologist for seventeen. I wanted to bring attention that about eighteen months ago, I have been in contact with the city trying to put forward the idea of offering low APV beverages to our clients. Unfortunately, I have not been successful in doing so. That was until our fifth ward, Alderman Andre Powell, personally introduced himself right after he was sworn into his new position. Andre asked me what needed to be done for my business and what he could do to help me. I gave him two simple answers, more parking and how I could offer low APV beverages to my clients. Since currently, under chapter thirty-eight, salons and barber shops are not included, and it would be deemed illegal to elevate our client's experience if we were to offer those. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Danielle. All right, I would take a motion to bring this ordinance to the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Zasada, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City manager, you want to kick us off?
Thank you, Mayor.
First, I did, Andre, or Alderman Powell wanted me to let everyone know that he is going to recuse himself from the vote on this particular item. Go ahead, city manager.
Okay. So as has been alluded to already, there is before you in this ordinance a proposal to add a new cosmetic liquor license. There are a number of criteria that are associated with that, that are in your background. Just briefly, I'm not going to read them all. They've been available to, of course, the council and to the public for a number of days now to review. But the businesses that are affected are those that, and this is where the word primary and principal comes in, it's in reference to the business, not to the particular alcohol. But the particular business has to be primarily providing personal beauty cosmetic services, such as barber shops, beauty shops, nail salons, and spas. And the customers and patrons should not be served such beverages until, unless they are receiving some type of service, cosmetic service, from the license holder or staff. The hours for the service of alcoholic liquors at such licensed premises, if they were established, would be from twelve noon to eight P.M. The owner would have to have an active license with the Illinois Department of Financial and Professional Regulation. That has to do with the ability to safely cut hair and provide those cosmetic services. DRAM shop insurance would be required, that, and state license would be required as well.
Yeah, and for me, just for the record, too, you know, this was brought forward, one, Danielle is a perfect example of it, and I've heard from multiple salon owners. I know, as liquor commissioner, I've had people say they've gone to get their mani-pedi or hair done or whatever, and ultimately, they had a glass of wine. And what it showed was, there's a particular segment of our constituency that really want to, I think, Danielle, you said enhance the client experience, right? And they're doing that. And the problem is, it's not legal to do that. So also, this is, is a modification to our code that if they want to pursue, to be able to legally enhance the client experience, now the city of DeKalb, finally, in our liquor code, has the ability for them to apply, understand the Basset training, so they understand what it means to serve in the state of Illinois, someone alcohol, and then have the DRAM insurance, the appropriate insurance for their business, to protect their business in case anything happens. So this was just a due diligence thing, and it's also partly, the city attorney is a very busy man, and has had some time to dot some i's and cross some t's on our liquor ordinance, and that's why it was brought forward. So with that, comments or questions from council? Yes, Alderman Zasada.
So I do want to address why this is different from some of the things that we've considered before. And I almost feel like we might have talked about this in the past, maybe years ago. But I want to say that this is different from the gas stations in the first place because the reason that we ended up not allowing gas stations to sell alcohol was because we prevented them from selling alcohol in the first place, and in doing so, we created a unique market that created liquor stores and made the liquor stores viable. And if we suddenly decided to allow it to be happening, to be sold at gas stations, then we would have been in a position where we were destroying the business in a market that we created ourselves. So that would have been disingenuous for us to have created that market and then taken that market away. So that was why we struggled with the gas station situation, I think, in the past, and why I was against it. You know, I wouldn't be opposed to maybe considering something like a five-year phase-out or something so that business owners could adapt to that. So that's the gas station situation. The laundromat, they were going to include video gambling, and I believe that was part of the reason that we didn't do it with the laundromats. I think that we know that the council is really not in favor of video gambling. And then the sandwich shop, I was kind of in favor of that myself, so. But, so I just want to say that I am totally in favor of this. You know, other cities are doing it. I agree that it enhances the client experience, and I think that, you know, it's sort of an upscale addition. I don't think that this is something that's going to be a problem, and I think we can handle it.
Council. Alderman Verbic.
I certainly understand the request for that customer experience, and also, it would help on the, with the bottom line, I believe. But in our current situation, we're already challenged with regard to compliance of alcohol resale as it is. Our police department is more busy than you can imagine with a lot of other things that are more important to the safety of the city of DeKalb, and I can't justify their time out watching salons and barber shops. I don't even know how many there are. Is it fair to say dozens? But nonetheless, that's why I can't support this.
Just for clarification, so I understand, right now, it's illegal for them to do that, and we're not in, our police aren't enforcing it or going around testing. Right, so if we pass the ordinance, it doesn't mean that all of a sudden, I would think, Chief, and correct me wrong, that there's going to be undue burden on the police department on this. It's really just trying to make, in my eyes, it's just trying to make the salon owner legal, is the angle. Alderman Walker.
So I understand both sides, but I'm a hard no, because I just don't understand why we always have to incorporate alcohol for, you know, the time of your life. I mean, and like Alderman Verbic did say, it will bring something on the police because at the end of the day, I ain't got out of a barber shop where there's kids that are twenty-one years old, and there's mothers. I'm breaking up fights between who's better, LeBron James or Michael Jordan? And imagine, you know, twenty-one to twenty-three-year-old kids with, you know, alcoholic beverages in their systems, you know, what that could lead to. Now, I know some of these shops, you know, are sophisticated enough where they probably could handle it, and maybe yours probably could. But then we get into another ballgame where we're saying, well, they can get it, they shouldn't get it, they can get it, and maybe them. And I don't want to get into that right there. But at the end of the day, I just don't understand why, and this is just not just for this, you know, resolution, but it's like we're always trying to either make us, make citizens gamblers, alcoholics, or smokers. And when it comes to all that stuff, I just get away from it, and I don't even want to put my big toe into the swimming pool with any of that because I don't, you know, think that you have to have a good experience or a great life being intoxicated or, you know, sipping on some wine. So I'm a hard no.
Yes, Alderman Perkins.
So I've got a couple of questions. So basically, any of the establishments that choose this will have to get their, some will have to be Basset certified in there, right?
Correct.
So, and secondly, each business has the option of choosing to sell beer and wine or champagne or not, correct? Not everyone falls into that category. So while there may be dozens of salons, maybe they all don't want to participate. Maybe that's not who their clientele is, in my estimation. And then, what was the last question I had? Oh, so in the ones that do choose to do it, what happens to the fifteen-year-old who's dropped off by mom to get a haircut? If at one of these establishments that chooses to participate? Can that fifteen-year-old get a haircut there with mom just dropping him off?
Yeah, the way that the ordinance is currently drafted is that it exempts that, so as most establishments that have a liquor license, you're not allowed to be under the age of twenty-one, or there's a permitted area, right? So there will be a premises plan or a business plan that's submitted to the, you know, to the liquor commissioner, who will be able to decide this, but the, you know, to see what the actual plan, if there is a permitted area, if the permitted area is the entirety of the salon. Each business might want to say that it's only this area of their business that you can have it or not. But depending on that, you could still have a business to where it would be the entirety of the salon, and mom could drop off the fifteen-year-old in that area. That's how the current draft would be.
So if the whole area is the permitted area, then the fifteen-year-old could go into an area that's allowed to serve beer and sit there and wait to get his haircut, right?
That, that is, it's subject to the liquor commissioner's approval, and then you cannot sell, obviously, to a twenty-one-year-old. A twenty-one-year-old can't possess, you know, the liquor, so on and so forth. But that, that is how, as of right now, that's how it would work out.
Yeah, Alderman Walker.
Can I ask Chief Burr a question? Chief, so I don't know if this is a question for you, but how will we even go about monitoring this, far as, like, when people sell people alcohol, when do you know enough is enough?
Right, so, I mean, there would have to be, I mean, of course, like every other establishment that we have that sells alcohol, they have to be trained, I mean, because we don't want people over-served. You could see a situation where someone could come into the barber shop or the nail salon already intoxicated. So that'd be a judgment call they would have to make, so they have to be trained in that. And then as far as compliance, we would, I mean, if this were to pass, then they would be subject to the same compliance checks that we do regularly. We just did one not too long ago for all our other establishments that sell alcohol. So all our, those, it would fall up under that same category, and we would do compliance checks with them as well. So that's the, when you talk about the burden, that's the only additional burden up to this point. And, you know, just speaking on the face of it. Now, of course, I mean, we, you know, I can't say for what kind of situations could occur after the fact. I hope that people wouldn't be over-served there, and it wouldn't lead to any residual issues for the police department. But to your point, Alderman Walker and Alderman Verbic, the additional weight would be the additional compliance checks that we would, we are already involved in as we speak. So, but to your, just to answer your question, Alderman Walker, yeah, there would have to be some training involved.
And what I learned, too, putting on a couple of events, the Basset training that the state requires you to go through, is the responsibility of the server. So the server, the only one that can serve has to be Basset certified, and the training they go through, because I've done it before, just being a guest bartender or something, you can't over-serve, and there's training on how to identify the signs of things like that. But the onus is actually on the server itself. So the training that the state does is actually pretty damn good, darn good, sorry. You have to go through quite a bit of it to get that certification in order to sell.
No, I get it. I get it. It's just, I guess I just don't see the need for alcohol in any type of, well, for my barber shop alone. But I guess I just don't see the need for, like, you're there for twenty-five to thirty-five minutes. I'm like, me personally, I want to get my hair cut, and I want to get out of there as quick as I can. I'm just thinking, when you start drinking, one, one leads to two, two leads to three, the three leads to four. Then by that time, you know, it's like, you have to trust that the, you know, that some of the consultation that the people are receiving are, you know, like Mayor Barnes says, is up to par. But I just think it's a slippery slope when you're playing with, you know, twenty-one, and I know everybody's not twenty-one, but I'm going to the twenty-one-year-olds because that's the legal age to drink, and those are the people that I'm more worried about. And that's like, like I said, you probably have a lovely, if I can say you can get it, I get it, you know what I'm saying? But the point is, I just don't trust every beauty and barber shop because I don't want it on my conscience that somebody left a beauty, barber shop, nail salon, and ran over a kid, and that wouldn't, I don't care what they think, but for me personally, that, I wouldn't be able to sleep at night. So that's why I'm coming with the hardest no that I ever came with on any agenda or resolution. So I'm sorry, but no.
Alderman Verbic.
And Chief, not to put you on the spot.
Sure.
The most recent compliance check, I believe, nine of the fourteen failed the compliance check. Is that correct?
That's correct. And then, and prior to that, we did have a more successful rate.
Right, right.
But this last one was definitely concerning.
And that's the point I'm trying to make, is that, again, I believe your hands are already full with not only that, but everything else keeping us safe here in DeKalb. So in this case, again, I don't see it as justified.
And where I like it is, right now, we know this is something that's happening because there's no legal means for a salon to be able to serve a glass of wine to one of their patrons. And that's one of the reasons why there's the demand for, hey, we want to do this legally. We do it legally. Now we're on the police department's radar, and the check that you just referred to, they'd be on that list. Right now, we have no way, unless we do a separate undercover sting, trying to go into random salons and check. So in some ways, I think it might be a little bit more oversight, but maybe not. Alderman Walker.
We had seventy-four DUIs last year, and I'm just saying, like, for me, like, nothing good could come out of this, like, I don't think, like. I mean, like, Chief Burr, like you did say, you know, you have to, your officers would do the normal checks, what they do now. But like you said, you're not compounding it with what could happen after it, and, you know, we can't, no one can see the future. But, you know, like my wife says, I'm a pessimistic, not an optimistic person. So I'm always going to lean towards, you know, the negative side, especially when, and I'm not trying to go over the board with lives that are at stake, but drinking, like, when you go to a bar, you go to a club, you got a DD. But when you go get your hair cut or go get your nails done, you don't have a DD because you go in there, you're getting the service done, and you're to get home. So that's the only, you know, that's where I'm.
Mm-hmm. Yes, Alderman Zasada.
You know, it's not a need. It's a luxury. And that's what we're trying to do, is offer businesses the opportunity to differentiate themselves with a unique service. So when you say, oh, I don't want to give this to every barber shop and every salon and every nail place, we're not. We are giving them the opportunity to do Basset training and to make sure that they are trained and prepared to do this the right way. So, I mean, I think that we need to, people are not going to nail salons and barber shops and to get their hair done to get trashed. They're going there to relax, all right? And when I go get my hair done, it takes two hours, okay? My husband was going to a place in Geneva where he would have to book it like a month in advance, and he loved that place. And when he'd get there, and he'd have to wait for his haircut, they would say, hey, you want a beer while you wait? And he was like, oh, my God, this is just such a special experience. It made him feel like he was being treated like a friend, like he was at somebody's home, and it was a special experience. It wasn't like he was like, oh, let me have some more beers. He'd have his beer, get his haircut, and then leave, and feel like he had a really luxurious experience. So I'm just saying, this is not like people trying to get trashed. This is like women trying to go out with their lady friends and have a glass of champagne before they go and, you know, get their nails done or have a special service.
And that's literally what was brought forward and why I brought it forward to council, is that. That was summed up nicely. Yes, Alderman Perkins.
So my aunt had a beauty shop growing up, and I know the margins on that are razor-thin. You know, there aren't a lot of people getting rich, cutting hair and cutting nails. Inside of this, to have the license, it's five hundred dollars, right, to have the license annually?
Correct.
So the people that want to participate are going to have to want to participate. It's not going to be the little, the little lady who is running a chair out of her basement and cutting a couple heads of hair. You know, so I think you're right. It's a luxury thing where, while there may be dozens, I don't see dozens of people lining up to get their, to spend their five hundred bucks to.
And the insurance.
And the insurance, and the DRAM shop, and the Basset certification. The Basset certification- And the insurance, and the DRAM shop, and the Basset certification. The Basset certification is a big deal, because really, I've gone through it. I'm a Basset-certified bartender, and there is some responsibility that comes with it. And these people are really, they're primarily cutting hair, cutting nails. So I agree. I think it's, I think it's a luxury. I wish I could have had a glass of wine or champagne on Saturday when I got my nails done.
All right, well, hang on. Can I get Alderman Smith?
Few questions, and, man, I think you can help out here. I mean, if someone has an active license with the Department of Financial and Professional Regulation, there is a clause in there on, they can get charged, right, for violating the alcohol section? So what I'm going with that is, they have to have a higher standard based on their licensing as hairdressers. Don't they have that?
Yeah, correct. There's a state licensure that comes, and it's a requirement of our liquor, as the draft is currently before you, that in order to have this liquor license, that they would have to have that state licensure.
Right.
They could risk losing their state licensure and their primary business.
That's where I'm going.
If they, yeah, were to violate the liquor license.
They've been through hundreds of hours of training. I don't think they're going to risk being tagged by Department of Professional Regulation for an alcohol violation in a shop they own. That really brings them up to a higher standard of responsibilities, how I look at it. I'm torn between this a lot. I agree with Alderman Perkins that, you know, five hundred dollars to someone's going to invest in this, especially when their main job is to cut hair, and also remember, we're also competing against some of the commercialized places as well, we, you know, in town. I'm going for this, approving, saying yes, because I just think it's, we're just adding another layer. And I agree, I was talking to Alderman Zazada about, I knew there was a place over east that had it, and I think there are a few of them where you go in and actually can, you know, get something. I don't know if they're licensed or not, maybe we're taking the proactive step. But there are other places in the country where this happens all the time. So anyway, yeah, I am in favor of this.
Any other comments or questions? With that, I guess roll call, please.
Zazada?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Four I.
All right. Ordnance two zero two four dash zero four four passes on first reading. I'm happy to actually leave it open for a second reading unless someone just wants to waive second reading. Okay. So no motion to waive second reading. All right. So we'll go ahead and waive second, or, sorry, we'll just hold this to the next agenda item. And mostly, the reason why I'm doing that right now is just a really great discussion. So it's an opportunity, I know I have a list of, and I don't like using people's names, but just, I've got a pretty big pile of people that are for this. I'd like to see this approved, but I'm okay to wait till the next meeting to make that happen. With that, then, I think we can move on to Agenda Item M, Reports and Communications, council member reports. Alderman Powell, you want to kick us off?
No report.
Alderman Walker.
Yeah, I want to give a shout-out to the DeKalb Police Department for beefing up the patrol when it comes to violations on the streets. I've seen a lot of cars, you know, going around buses with the stop sign out. I've been seeing, you know, a lot of vehicles just going past red lights. But as of last week, they nipped it in the butt, and me being on the street, I was able to see, they definitely stepped it up, and you know what? I just wanted to say, I appreciate you guys doing that. Thank you, city manager, for listening to me a little bit on that. Appreciate you.
Alderman Verbic.
No report.
Alderman Perkins.
I'm going to have coffee Thursday morning at nine at French Toast. If anyone wants to have a cup of coffee, step by. Otherwise, no report.
Alderman Zazada.
No report.
Alderman Smith.
First off, I missed the last couple of meetings. A little choked up. Medical emergency within my family, and we're still fighting it, but thank you all.
Absolutely. Just a few things for me. I met with Nycor Gas and Commonwealth Edison at the DeKalb County Housing Authority. The housing authority, over a multi-year period, has been able to acquire, I think it was two point one million dollars in grants in suburbs cities to help some of the, you know, some of those in our community that have the need that the housing authority serves. But I got to give Randy Bordages over there a lot of credit for hustling, going out, getting that money, and that is money that ultimately comes from the private sector and offsets taxpayer contributions. So that was a really cool event to be able to attend. I also was invited to do, by Ms. Cardella at Lincoln Elementary School, to do a Q and A with her students. I was asked a wide variety, if you can imagine, especially, do I like the zoo was probably one of the number-one questions. But there were some kids in that classroom that asked me about balance in my role. I mean, these kids are, I mean, ten years old. I was blown away, and I shouldn't be, but I'm always blown away when I get around our youth, even at that age. The next generation that's coming are pretty powerful. And they all browbeat me, conned me into visibly playing hopscotch in front of the entire elementary school. But I will say, I crushed it and nailed the landing. I also went to Campus Meets Community event. This is an event that Northern Illinois University puts on. It's an opportunity for all the students to meet many of the organizations in our community. If there was a hundred organizations there, there were two hundred. I mean, it was just, it was amazing and packed, students everywhere. It was the best-attended event by both the community and students that I had seen. And again, it was great to go around. I did speed chess with the chess club. I held my own for, must have been twenty-three seconds, and then it was checkmate. But, you know, I felt pretty good about it. And then the last thing was, we had the first National Bank Challenge, I think it was last Friday. And I can't remember what they've raised at this point, but it's well over twenty million for the boosters of both the Sycamore School District and the DeKalb School District. And it's another massive community event. The stadium was, I would say, almost packed. The field was just energized with all the student athletes that were out there. I do have to think NIU and all the people that I know, that's a big event to put on. And NIU does a great job hosting that particular event, which I know our students absolutely adore, playing in the big stadium. So it was a great couple of weeks in our community, and I look forward to the next two. How about you, Mr. City Manager?
Just want to add my best wishes to Alderman Smith and his family.
Absolutely. All right. Hearing no other comments, we have, moving on to Agenda Item N, executive session, we have none. So with that, Agenda Item O, adjournment. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Powell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, same sign. All right, we are adjourned.